To order, this is an open meeting. Hosted right around the doors you come in is the actual Open Meeting Act. If you would, we'd ask that you stand with us for a moment of silence and as well, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Following with role, call Beth.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Murin. Moaning.
Here.
File.
Here.
Okay, I would be ready to entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda as provided you.
So move, your honor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Read my notes, huh? Right, we're removing from the consent agenda item number 13, and it will be placed then on the full agenda. So with that, if I could have a motion.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second for approval of the consent agenda, removing item number 13, placing it on the regular agenda. If you would please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and as well, I would like approval of the full agenda with the addition of item 13 from the consent agenda to be added to the final.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. First item under our regular agenda tonight is consideration of approval of amendment number one to the Northeast Nebraska Line Funding Assistance Agreement between Black Hills Nebraska Gas Utility Company, LLC, and the city of Norfolk. Can I have a motion for?
I would move consideration of approval of amendment number one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Looking for discussion, do you want to start that for us?
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor and Council, this is again, an amendment of the Northeast Nebraska Line Funding Assistance Agreement that was originally put together when Teos Tubler was in the process of siting their plant here. This agreement was in place until October of last year, 2015, in light of the fact that Teos Tubler is not going to be sited here in Norfolk and OCT plant is. This agreement had to be amended to reflect what, where our ALB $8.40 are going to go. And if you look in your amendment and your packet and at this agreement, you'll see that the ALB $8.40, $3.6 million worth of the citizens' dollars here in Norfolk are going to go to directly to Black Hills Energy to help in the construction of a minimum of a six-inch natural gas line from the Bancroft area here to Norfolk, which is going to be a godsend for our economic development prospects going on in the future, as well as development of the OCT plant here within the next year or two. So this is just amendment to that agreement that allows us to expend those dollars with your approval here tonight, and it also puts us in a position where we can schedule those payments out to Black Hills upon their signing of the contracts with the construction companies and the pipe installers. So it allows a real solid relationship between our partners and Black Hills, and they've been nothing but great to work with through this whole process. So we're excited about it here locally. I know everybody is excited about it, and our industrial partners and our new partners in the future hopefully will benefit a great deal by this new line that's going to be coming our way here before too long. And also, I think Scott is here, Scott Zaruba is here from Black Hills, and he may want to make a few comments, Scott, if you'd like, or we'd answer any questions that the council would have.
To sign in.
Please.
Do you need to state it, too?
State your name.
Scott Zaruba, Black Hills Energy, 1113 Monroe, Norfolk, Nebraska. I just, Shane did a great job explaining kind of this is just amendment to previous agreement we had, and I'd just like to echo his, the city, the staff has been great to work with. We worked tirelessly on this amendment. It's 40-some pages of work there. So Black Hills is excited to be a partner with the city of Norfolk. Look forward to a great relationship, and this is good for the city and it's good for Black Hills and the community, so.
I think the important part of that is, you know, sometimes I think we tie it all to the one that is certainly we're excited to be bringing them into the community, but as well, it's beneficial to many others out there that have had at times limited access. So this is a win-win for, I think, the whole community area, so. And I know your efforts are out there to bring on more.
Yeah, this doesn't just benefit OCT.
No.
There's other customers in town that'll benefit from this, so existing customers will assist them in their growth also, so.
Yep.
Very good.
No, it's been a pleasure. Scott, lots of time spent, and you know, you've given it all, and thanks to your group there, too, so appreciate it.
Very good, thank you.
Any questions for him before we let him sit down? Okay, all right. With that, any other discussion or questions from the council? If not, then I'm going to ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, next we are looking for consideration of approval of ordinance number 5376 amending section 24-164 of the official city code to allow parking on the east side of 7th Street between Michigan Avenue and Pazwalk Avenue.
Your Honor, I offer for consideration ordinance number 5376. Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Who's going to speak first here?
I'll speak to that, Your Honor.
Would you?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Beth, if you could bring up the screens. This is a, this is a situation we've been working on for, going over a year for sure, I think. We had a request from the railroad to look into the parking situation in this particular area on the terrace in between 7th Street and Michigan Avenue. So if you look at your computer screens and on the public look at their screens above, you can see that large terrace in there. Well, there's a 50-foot setback from the middle of the railroad on either side of the railroad tracks that is railroad property, and then the remaining part of the terrace, about 10 to 15 feet or so, is the city. Over the years, it seems like how are more and more vehicles and trailers and trucks and whatnot have been parked on that technically illegally on the railroad showed some concern for liability issues, for maintenance issues, for their track and for the grassy area there, and came and seen me about what could be done about dealing with the cars being parked on private property. I kindly asked them to wait till we had some neighborhood discussions with the neighborhood down in that area, so we could come to some sort of solution. We did that, we had a subcommittee meeting, we had a neighborhood meeting that was well-attended, and we discussed that in length that night, and the subcommittees decided to look at putting parking on there potentially and moving that action to the full council for consideration here this evening. We made a commitment to the neighborhoods that we wouldn't have any action until January. Here we sit in January, so now it's time to decide the future of the parking or not down there. At the end of the day, something has to be done with the parking of vehicles and trucks and trailers on private property. We have limited options, I can explore those with you if you'd like, Mayor and Council, but more importantly probably is really, this is consideration to the neighborhood down there, because the neighborhood, that is, neighborhood's been around for obviously a long time in our city's existence. When it was built, there was no alley placed there, so the people that live along that stretch between Michigan and Pazwalk don't have any alley access, there is no alley. So their ability to park in today's day and age with multiple families or multiple cars and a lot of families, their ability to park is really limited. So we're trying to look at a solution that would accommodate the interest of the property owners or the folks that live along 7th Street, and yet accommodate the interest of the railroad and the city. Another concern that has been brought over the years numerous of times to elected officials' attentions and to staff attention is the fact that the unsightliness of parking on terraces, not only in this area, but across the community, and what that means for our community. That's a secondary concern, but it's a real one. So at the end of that discussion, the options came down to, one, allowing parking on this stretch of 7th Street between Michigan and Pazwalk, two, doing nothing and allowing that to go unchecked, which won't last very long because the railroad, I'm sure, will file a complaint, and then there'll be tickets issued because it's illegal, or three, potentially long-term, if the parking solution isn't accepted, is to carve out a piece of, part of that terrace and pave it for parking along there. That has its good and bad parts and pieces to that as well, and something that we can explore long-term if the council wishes us to do that. But tonight's action would either confirm that and allow parking there, starting as soon as the council would want it to, or delaying it till perhaps April. This is a snow emergency route. The street's 31 feet wide from curb to curb. It's very similar in nature, if not a very similar nature, to Prospect Avenue right outside our door between 7th and 13th Street. That street is 31 feet at best, I think it's closer, I just measured it before I came in here, I think it's closer to 30 feet. Of course, it was snowy, so it might even, it might be 31 feet, but we allow parking on Prospect Avenue, for example, and that's a snow emergency route as well, and we've allowed that for a long, long time and with great success. The traffic counts between 7th, on 7th Street between Omaha Avenue and Pazwalk, as of the 2013 count that was, that we did, was 2,100 cars. On Prospect Avenue, between 7th and 13th Street appears to be 2,155, so the nature of the traveling public is the same. So that's the information that staff was charged to gather up for the council's consideration tonight and look for direction on how you wanted to move forward with this particular ordinance. Be happy to answer questions, if you have.
Shane, I see that, am I right, the parking, proposed parking would be on the east side of the road?
Yes.
Across from where the houses are or right next to that? Is there a reason we picked the east instead of west side of that?
There is, that was a great, lots of discussion there between the police department, the fire department, and the street department and the neighborhood. It would make sense logically to put it on the west side closer to the houses, but the problem is you got so many driveways in there, by the time you look at your line of sight and your distances, and the safety issues of backing out of the driveway and then having a car parked right at the curb, we felt, the public safety folks and the public works folks felt that that would be a detriment to the people that live there on the west side, because they'd be backing out and then they'd have a car parked there, and then they'd have traffic coming. So on the east side, that line of sight, the visualization of the street going north or south there would be open, and it would allow for more parking, because there's some rules about setback distances from driveways that you can park. So in order to maximize parking for the residents on, in that area, the east side was chosen, and for the safety factors. Thank you, you bet.
Good question, Corey. Anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I understand the comparison you made between Prospect and 7th. The only difference with this is we have a little, this is a little more unique. There is a 15-foot setback or right-of-way, the city has a 15-foot right-of-way on the east side of the road, and then you also have a 50-foot setback from the railroad. So you've got a really, a pretty good-sized green space there, which does provide you with some options, you know, looking like long-term, which I think we really need to look at. I, you know, we've got a, getting around Norfolk fairly is easy, because our, you know, the city forefathers are smart enough to set us up in a grid, a one-mile grid. You go from Eisenhower to Benjamin to Norfolk Avenue to Omaha Avenue, and then coming the other way, you go 37th, 25th, 14th, 1st, and Victory Road. So we're getting around Norfolk pretty easy, and in the middle of that, you've got like Queen City, Riverside Boulevard, Pazwalk, you know, and I would throw 7th Street in there in the mix, too. I guess I never really thought about Prospect, but I just don't like the idea of just clogging this road up, and I feel like that's what's going to happen, and we don't necessarily need to, because we do, there is an option there. And you spoke, you talked about a little bit about possibly, you know, maybe doing some long-term looks at this and doing some paving and getting them off the street. I think, I think that would be the best thing for not only that neighborhood, since I don't really look at it as a neighborhood issue. I mean, 2,100 people use that street if you talk about the traffic counts. So it's a major road, I think we really need to look at not trying to cause more congestion when, you know, if you look at, if you throw some numbers out there, and I know Minew can't talk about it one time, you know, you could probably throw a $60,000 figure at it and maybe fix it, not fixing the road, not doing any work to the road, but providing parking space on the east side.
Yeah, I think those options.
You know, there's an option there.
I think those options are open, obviously open to the council at some point in the future, either near or far. I would suggest to you, though, that as you contemplate your one- and six-year street plan, you want to prioritize those kind of things, you know, and the rough numbers on that are around that $100,000 figure to do what, but that's, you know, that's a really rough number, so, you know, until you really start to look at the paving cost and the infrastructure that's underneath it perhaps, and go into bids and the environment, you really don't know what those numbers are, but, you know, somewhere around that. But you have to also consider that your priorities in your one- and six-year street plan have to be weighed, I mean, because it's a large city and you guys make a lot of determinations on where and when to put those dollars. So what appears to me, just looking at Madison Avenue in particular and Prospect Avenue in particular, knowing that they have a history of parking and on that with similar traffic accounts and exact width, I wonder if you could try it and see what happens, you know? Oftentimes, the traveling public in the neighborhood adjusts to that and actually it becomes a non-issue. If it becomes an issue long-term for you, and the community continues to grow, or that traffic counts change drastically, then you always have the option of paving into the terrace. Once you start paving, I will also just remind the council, once you start paving into the terrace, you have to be able to have a clear line of demarcation when and when, or when not you're going to do that, because I think you'd have more requests come throughout the community perhaps that, go ahead and pave my terrace, too, so I can have additional parking, because there's, I mean, you have to weigh all of those considerations, because once you start it, you want to be able to set your, hang your hat on a good hook that gives you some solid criteria to say yes and no in the future.
Has the railroad given you a timeframe?
Well, I did reconfirm that after the neighborhood meeting that we had in this room, and they were very gracious and said, but we'd like to see it done sometime before all the grass is growing up again. So I don't think they'd have any issue if you wanted to delay it till April, say, or the springtime. I don't think there'd be any issue with the railroad, but I would say after that, they'll be knocking on my door, wondering what the status of that is, and I'm sure they're watching closely on your decision-making tonight.
I mean, do you think they'd be open-minded to the fact that people have been parking on this for 50 years, that, you know, maybe one or two more years, if they know we've got a plan in place, take care of the issue, they might be willing to allow it? Maybe you start limiting things, you can only park within that 15-foot setback, you can't use trailers, you can't have trailers on there, but you can have vehicle, I mean, is some of that discussion worth having before we make this decision?
Well, I'm open to whatever you direct me to do, I'm just following the orders of the subcommittee in this council, obviously, you know, I, I think we got to be careful, because the railroad is a good partner, obviously, to the community and to us, and, you know, they have a concern there, and for us to ask, you know, if they have a liability concern that's real for them, and that's what they're saying, that's real, and, you know, the longer that goes on, the more exposure they have as a company, I suspect, and, you know, that's one of their main concerns. So I don't know if I can answer that, councilman. You could ask them, I guess we could ask them, but we got to be careful what we're asking our private companies to do as well, you know, because they're bringing on that liability. Of course, this day and age of liability, everybody is very cautious, including the city of Norfolk, and all government, well, businesses and everyone's more and more cautious, because people are, seem to be sue easier than they used to in the past. So those liability things are real for them, that's all I know, and they reconfirmed that with me.
I appreciate that, but I think if we get people off that 50-foot easement, talking about that, maybe their liability then changes a little bit, because just in your picture up here, you can kind of look to the top, you see there's something sitting close within that 50-foot easement, you know, that may, you know, try to get people off the 50-foot into the 15-foot. Just a thought, maybe they would be, oh, you know, you're making progress, and then this, or one, your plan, two, your plan, three, your plan. I know, you know, I know that you want to maybe paint the lines and see how it goes, I understand that method of thinking, too, before you put any money in this project, but I look at this as kind of unique, because the traffic count on the street, the fact that you have an option with an easement there to do something, I think makes this a little more unique than if somebody says, hey, come pave my terrace, you know?
Well, I'm not going to argue it's not, it's relatively unique. I'm not going to argue, period. I just think you need to think about both of those things, and there is another consideration about the beautification of that and what that looks like for your community. I know I've had elected officials on this, on this council talk to each other and to staff about what we can do about parking on the terrace in the community in large. So the more you let that happen, you know, and this is one of those focal points that folks look at and say, well, boy, that sure looks, that sure looks rough for our community, you know, and I know beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but still, those kind of comments are made and those kind of questions have been asked in earnest from elected officials, and we're just trying to be responsive to those concerns.
Shane, I'd like to explore that a little bit further of what councilman said of, will they work with us? Could it be possibly just licensed vehicle or currently licensed vehicles only and not trailers or any types of items that might just sit there? But truthfully, I'd be willing to table this and have some discussions with them before we make that decision and let that, let that go. And I don't, I don't know that necessarily wintertime is the best time to make that change either, but I think it'd be worth exploring what we could do to try and keep people within that 15 feet as close to that road or off of their property on that easement, see where we could go with that.
Yeah, as far as painting, painting and striping the street wintertime, obviously, is a poor time to do that. So if the council wanted to delay that till spring until the streets were dry again, you know, to stripe it, we could, we could delay it, and that's why the blank is in your packet there as far as setting a date. I'll do whatever you tell me to do. I'll just say again, though, I've talked to the railroad twice now formally about this particular topic, and they want it, they want to change now. Will they be gracious and give us two or three years? I don't know. I think that's asking a lot personally for them, so I think.
Do you have something to add for us, Dick?
I have a question.
Oh, come on up and let's hear your question. You bet.
I have one question.
Pardon me?
That's not my question, I just was listening to this and thought I'd ask.
Okay.
What type of parking are we talking about here? Angle, parallel?
I assume parallel is what we talked about.
Parallel?
Just as we, yeah.
Okay. So all those residents coming from the north are going to go turn around in the driveway and parallel park?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you did angle, I guess we didn't really talk in great length about.
That is similar, though, Shane, to what happens along Prospect. Now, we only allow parking on one side of Prospect currently, right?
Right, south side.
South side, so, you know, if you're going to the west and you want to park on Prospect, or Morsel and Ward, too, and we're, when they're going to west from 25th Street over to, what is that, 30th? Where Mr. Kimes and that group visited with us, there is only parking on one side of Prospect there.
That's correct.
And that is on the, wish Dennis were here, that's on the south side, if I remember right.
I believe it's on the south side, yes.
So, that's all I want to know.
Madison's the same way, it's only on the north side. Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, it's, you turn it on around. That was one thing I was going to ask also, what's the, do you remember the numbers that we had when we visited with the group from 25th Street?
I think it was, I'm pretty sure it was 2,600 to 2,800 was the numbers on west, Prospect, west to 25th Street, is that what you're asking, councilman?
Yes.
If my memory serves me, I think it was 26 or 2,800.
And we have parking on one side of the street there, we just have a speed issue.
Right, that was the feeder in between 25th Street and.
Sir, come on up. And I know that, appreciate seeing you here tonight, because you were here, I believe, once before, and it wasn't on the agenda, so forgetting out, speak your name for us, if you will, to, into the microphone there.
Honey Sandal.
And we'll need you to sign in.
Can you guys turn up your mics just a little bit? I'm a little bit hard of hearing, I've been around too much banging all of my life, so.
Very good, I will ask them all to speak up a little bit. Thanks for.
I couldn't even understand one word he said hardly.
Well, believe me, sometimes you don't want to, so.
Maybe I shouldn't have.
Yeah, right.
There is half an alley there.
Okay.
On the north.
Not a utilized alley.
Huh?
You mean, there's just, right on the north part, there's a little bit of an alley jetted in there.
It ends right on the south end, southwest corner.
Over the years, all those backyards, for the most part, have been filled up, isn't that correct?
Pardon?
Most of the black backyards of those residents from 7th Street and A Street have filled that alleyway up with their fences, or, so it's not a wide-open alley.
How come it's not, one of them's got a fence, one of them's got a hedge partway out, and beyond that hedge you can see clear down to the next street.
We, well, we discussed this at the neighborhood meeting, and the other neighbors were.
You've never been up that alley, have you?
I haven't been up that alley, no. So is there, so are you saying there's an alley, a full alley?
I've been looking at it all summer.
Is there a full alley that you can use?
Pardon?
Full alley that all the residents can use?
There's a, the one, the house north of me, it's got a tree stump there that can come out, and the neighbor's fence is there, but the pylon poles, or the way it looks to me, are on the east edge of the right-of-way.
That was all the testimony of the neighbors that night at the neighborhood meeting, some of the testimony was that alley's being used by different parties along the whole back, and there was not interest in using, opening that alley up, if you remember right.
But, I mean, to me, that'd be the simplest way to do it.
Well.
Parking on the east side of that street is going to be a fiasco.
Well, the other option is we can just issue tickets. I mean, I don't, I don't want to be hard-nosed on it, but at the end of the day, if the railroad, if the railroad folks say, we got to want them off there, but the police departments are going to issue tickets. So I, I mean, I don't know what to do for sure with, we can look at the alley, opening it up again if you want to as well, it's up to the mayor and council. I know there was issues that night.
But it's, it's, the garages, I look to the south, the garages are all right on the west end.
Or we can leave it alone and let people park on the private property. I mean, those really are the options. I, it's, it's up to the mayor and council what you want to do with that. Opening up that alley seemed to be difficult for the neighbors that were at that meeting that night.
But is that a legal alley?
I don't know the answer to that question.
It's in plans that.
I don't know the answer to that, for sure.
Well, I got something to say about the beautification railroads were about. He mowed that over across three houses, how many summers? And otherwise, the grass grew up like this if he wouldn't have mowed it.
Yeah, if they're going to take care of it, it's got to be mowed, sprayed, and watered.
Understood.
Because they, they never mowed one.
Never, never mowed it for years.
We wore a riding snapper out, keeping that mowed.
Yeah, I believe that's, I believe that to be true. There's gardens in there over the years and all kinds of different.
I don't know, but.
Parking on the east side of that street.
What is the feeling here, council?
I would suggest, or make a motion to table this.
Do you want to table it?
I do.
Or do you, or do you want to extend it out to April, or, I mean?
Well, I think what I'd like to see happen is to explore some of the stuff that's been talked about tonight, just a little more in-depth. I know Shane's done a lot of hard work getting it where we're at now, but I think we could just, maybe there's some more questions we could ask, find out a little more. If the railroad's talking about the 50-foot or the 15, they want it all the way, you know what I mean, some of those questions.
Yeah, were they really, I mean, the 15-foot is your easement, the city's easement, so.
And then, I don't think we cut this gentleman's name.
They wanted off their 50, 50-foot. They wanted off their 50, 50-foot.
Did, do we need to get this gentleman's name?
Yeah, I will have him sign in. I will make sure he does.
But you know, he talks about possibility, there maybe there's, you know, I don't, I don't remember the conversation about the alley.
Thank you.
Back there. So if there is some of the, you know, maybe that's another option to bring up again. If this is going to create a lot of hardship, you know, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there instead of.
We can sure have, have that meeting again with the neighbors. I can tell you that one gentleman was ecstatic. There's probably seven to 12 people here, councilmen, that were there, please check me where I'm wrong. One of the neighbors was very happy with the parking, thought it was the greatest idea ever.
I was here that night.
And some were concerned about the parking. A lot of them wanted to leave it the way it was, but that's not a great option for us, at least not on the 50 feet.
No, I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody was in favor of just leaving it the way it is. I think we've got to do something, but I'm not sure if we're right, if we're ready to make that decision just yet.
I think that alleyway, you only went like a quarter to a third of that whole area.
That's what they told us.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're under too.
Before it gets plugged and then what are you going to do if you open it up, you're not going to have room to park, so I don't know why that would help you.
Not all the neighbors or not everybody involved can use that then.
What I remember hearing was somebody saying they were the only house that had a partial alley behind them, if I remember right. There was a couple that was here.
There was, right on the north end.
Right.
You're right, mayor, yes.
Now, you have made a motion, Shane?
Yes.
To table?
Table.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion with a second to table consideration of the ordinance number 5376. You want to vote, please? Nothing else I need to, okay. I'll let you vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion to table ordinance 5376 carries.
Okay, you two, so that you don't come back in the next month or two, we will make sure that you are included on the agenda and let you know specifically if and when it comes off the table. All right? Please be careful when you walk back out there. I know it was kind of dangerous coming across, so again, thanks for being here. All right, and we have one other thing then that we need to look at tonight and that's consideration of approval of the mayor's temporary appointments of Melissa Wentling and Gary Murin as alternate to the zoning board of adjustment for an appeal hearing. Who's speaking to this?
I can introduce.
Do we need a motion? Oh, we need a motion here on this.
Still move you out of consideration.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Shane, if you would, thanks.
Yes, ma'am. This temporary appointment is in response to a board of adjustment action that's scheduled for January 25th. That board of adjustment action is an appeal of our city planners' interpretation of what the comprehensive plan says an area is, the future comprehensive plan says an area along Omaha Avenue to the north from 25th Street East, that general area out there in relationship to the Eagle Distributing and SQUAD development of that owns that area out there. Through that, course of that planning commission action, there was questions asked about whether that, the future land use map and the comprehensive plan showed what that area, whether it was industrial or commercial. The question was asked, there's some ambiguity in the, in the comprehensive plan that was pointed out. The future land use map itself shows it as a commercial area. The text of the comprehensive plan document shows it potentially as industrial. So when there's a conflict like that or code charges the zoning administrator, in this case, our city planner, to make the determination, she made that determination looking at a historical review of the record and how we treated past zoning actions in that area. And upon her review of that historical record, how the city of Norfolk treated those actions, she determined that was to be, was commercial. That decision has been appealed to the board of adjustment, which is the right of either party to do. So in the, in response to that, we had to cite the board of adjustment when our current members, there is, there's five of them plus an alternate, so six in total. Two of those have a confirmed, confirmed conflict of interest. So we had to reach out and find folks that could fill those spots. We're trying to put in, put the issue in front of a full board. So under the mayor's direction, staff reached out to past board of adjustment members and we found two. The alternate's going to fill one, which is proper, and then we found two additional past members that said they would temporarily perform in that, in that setting. One will sit at the, on the dais and hear the case and then one will sit in the audience just in case one of the board of, board of adjustment members is sick. So we get the five, so we just kind of covering our bases there. And these two are the, the past members that said they would step up for the community and sit on the board of adjustment to hear, to hear that, that appeal.
Questions at all? No?
How do you determine which one sits in the audience as the alternate?
Well, I'll be honest, I'll be honest with you, there wasn't, we had a tough time actually finding folks that really wanted, wanted to do it.
I'd be curious.
Yeah.
Gary, the alternate, who was sitting in the room. He's the alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, and we just, we started at the top, top of our list by no rhyme or reason of past members that have recently got off and the first two that we called really didn't have a great interest or were out of town to do it. So we got to the third member, which is Ms. Wentling, and she said she would do it if her schedule was clear. She confirmed that. She's an attorney by trade and, and a past member and she said she would do it. And then we reached back to the next member, Gary Murin, who's sat on the board of adjustment and sat on the planning commission for a long, long time and is in the two-mile zoning jurisdiction. There's a statute out there that requires one of the members to be in the two-mile zoning jurisdiction, so we were dealing with that because one of the conflicted members is in the two-mile zoning jurisdiction, but is conflicted, so we were dealing with the interpretation of the statute there. So we wanted to reach out and get somebody that was in the two-mile zoning jurisdiction and, and had some past planning experience and Mr. Murin fit that to a T. So we reached out to him and he said he would do it as well. So really, if everything goes according to plan, Melissa will be the one that sits with the other five, four members and hears the appeal.
Okay, clear explanation. Any other questions, anyone?
January 25th, what time?
Five, five o'clock, right, Val? And I'm sorry, didn't have my mic on. Sorry.
Okay. No other questions? You can?
One, one thing that, just to add to what Shane said, is if you go to the, to the board of adjustment, when the, when the issue about the interpretation of the map and the plan comes up, which is the single issue before the board of adjustment, the statutes don't really address the situation where you have multiple declarations of conflicts of interest. What the statute says is that when somebody appeals something, in order for that appeal to be successful, they, the, the party that's appealing needs to have four affirmative votes. So the notion has always been, for instance, if we have a board of adjustment meeting and four members show up because somebody was, that they were going to come and then they don't make it, we have traditionally gone to the people that appealed it and said, hey, do you want to go forward with this appeal or do you want to reschedule this and have it at a time when you can get five members that you can get, have the possibility of getting four votes from? So what we've done here, what we're, what, what this would do is this would say, we don't have eligible members, so you're not going to find anything in the statutes about temporary appointments, but it just seems to be consistent with what's been done before and it's, seems to be fair. So that's what's being done here with the proposed appointment of these folks just to hear the hearing, the matter coming on for hearing on the 25th.
Great explanation. Okay, are, you appeared from nowhere. Are you coming forward?
Well, I hope you say the same thing about my explanation that you said about Clint's.
I hope I can too, Paul.
I, can I make a comment about the street?
No, please, let's go on to this. I know we got a couple councilmen we're going to lose here, so.
Well, I'll be brief.
Thank you.
Parking stalls 10-foot and it leaves you with two 10-foot drivelines. That's not a legal driving lane, I don't think. Need 11 or 12-foot. Anyway, I'm here, I, I would like to request that the, you reconsider your appointments of Mr. Murin and Mrs., Ms. Wentling.
Because?
Because Gary has already voted on the, when he was a planning commission member, he has already voted and put his position into the public record that he is, thinks that property should be light industrial through the planning commission vote. So I don't think he should be allowed to vote. It's, you already know how his, what his position is and the, I have an ongoing legal matter with Melissa. I don't want to go into detail with it, but I don't think she can give you a fair and balanced vote with.
I don't know what your specific dealings with Melissa has to do with whether or not the determination of what she believes to be correct, one way or the other, Paul, has to do with it. I mean, all we're talking about is our.
No matter what we're talking about, I know what we're talking about, it's just the position that, we have an ongoing legal matter and I just don't think she can make a fair decision on, on, on my behalf or SQUAD. I'm here for SQUAD, by the way.
I understand that. Yeah, I understand that, but again, it's.
Well, you'll have to decide.
Okay.
That's my position. I don't think she, they should be appointed because of those two.
Okay.
You're finding someone, Gary already, you know, like I said, he's already made his decision, I think, with the two votes in the planning commission, so.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Anyone else that wants to address this at all? All right then, elected officials, are you ready to vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, appreciate that. I see nothing else on the agenda, so with that, we are adjourned.